Call the meeting, uh, call the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two City Council Regular Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Carey?
President.
Chilson?
President.
Parker?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. I move to add Lay Down Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero four zero, authorizing the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with First Forty Feet LLC for professional consulting services for the Saldana Riverfront Redevelopment Project to the agenda as Agenda Item Eight B five and request on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Are there any objections to adding Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero four zero to the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, that Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero four zero is added to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, council meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction, ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero two four, authorizing the survey, plating, and purchase of a portion of tract A, new morning subdivision for a purchase price of six dollars per square foot, and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars in the general fund, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero two five, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by sixty thousand dollars in the general fund for changes to the authorized personnel staffing table for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, introduced by the city manager, public hearing on September fourteen, twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero two six, accepting grant funds from the State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Fire Protection, and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by two hundred thousand dollars in the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund for spruce bark beetle mitigation and hazard fuel reduction, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero two seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Fund for additional expenditures on the twenty-nineteen Runway Rehabilitation Project, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on September fourteen, twenty-twenty-two. Resolutions, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero three seven, supporting the Kenai Peninsula Borough's application for a Safe Streets and Roads for All SS-4A Action Plan Grant and authorizing the City of Saldana to be included as a joint applicant, introduced by the city manager. Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero three eight, authorizing the city manager to purchase a police truck, animal control truck, and maintenance plow truck through cooperative purchasing agreements for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, introduced by the city manager. Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero three nine, authorizing the city manager to enter into an encroachment agreement with DRGM Alaska Prop Co. LLC for the development of a downtown public parking lot, introduced by the city manager. Lay Down Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero four zero, authorizing the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with First Forty Feet LLC for professional consulting services, excuse me, services for the Saldana Riverfront Redevelopment Project, introduced by the city manager. Other items, Action Memorandum Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero one eight, Twenty-Twenty-Two Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment, introduced by the mayor, appointment of Rebecca Scudder, seat F, term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Action Memorandum Twenty-Twenty-Two dash zero one nine, request for an excused absence from September fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, and September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two regular city council meetings from Vice Mayor Parker, and that is your consent agenda.
Oh, thank you. Are there any public comments on any items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there a... Go ahead, um, please state your name and address for the record.
Is that good? Oh, yeah, okay. I can hear myself. Uh, good evening, Mayor Whitney, members of the council. Um, I'm Robert Ruffner. I'm the relatively new planning director for the borough. So, one of the things that was on your consent agenda was a, a grant application. It's a joint application that's going forward from the borough and working with all the cities. And so, um, I do know the rule about politics that if you think you have the votes and something consented, then you don't talk about it. So, I won't really talk about that, but what I will talk about is the process. And what I hope is a signal to all the municipalities across the borough is that, um, a- as I move into the role of the planning director, what I really want to do is, is represent the whole borough. And when we have opportunities like this, where a plan that can really generate some, um, good, good outcomes in the future, and in this case, it's transportation and safety that, that I really want to work with the cities and, and, and make sure that we, um, achieve those goals by, by working together. So, that's really all I wanted to say tonight. So, I think, you know, if, if I have my way, we will continue to see us working together more closely on, on things that involve planning and, and, you know, a transportation plan, you know, making our roads safer is certainly makes a lot of sense to me. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffner. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any item that was on the consent agenda that was read earlier? Seeing none here in the council chambers, I'm looking at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in Zoom. So, we'll close that portion of the, uh, public comments. Having no one else wishing to speak, the approved of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approve in the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, the, um, hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next one, public comments and presentations, other than the i- other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker. I think I missed something here. I did. Item number four, presentation with prior notice. Visitor Centers Quarterly Report by Shannon Davis, Executive Director of the Saldana Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Davis, you have, uh, ten minutes.
Thank you. Gosh, it is a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I just came over from the park. It's a beautiful evening, no rain, which is such a joy. Uh, it's hard to believe that I'm here as well. Uh, summer has absolutely flown by. Um, I'm sure it, it has been just as busy for all of you as it has been for us. As I was preparing this report last week, I really reflected back on how hopeful I was heading into the second quarter and heading into this summer, that we were really going to be back to normal. We were, and things were just going to be like they used to be. And that really hasn't turned out to be the case, but in a much different way than I anticipated. So, as predicted, our visitor numbers were very strong this year, uh, possibly even surpassing two thousand and nineteen. But that said, our businesses in the community had to scramble a bit this summer. Even now, our businesses are continuing to operate at less than full staffing. Supply chain issues have caused some problems, and of course, the rising cost of goods and fuel has hit everybody as well. Uh, so there were many times this summer I would see notices on Facebook from businesses that had to close for a day or two because they didn't have the staff to stay open, or they ran out of supplies. I saw more than one business reaching out to the community, asking for some grace. Uh, they were resilient, they were creative, and they made it work, uh, just like we all did. But it was rough. It was a rough road for many. So, that might help explain, while it seemed like we had more people in town for the second quarter compared to last, our taxable sales came in as close to flat as flat could possibly be. I was astounded when I saw that of seventy-five point seven million dollars in taxable sales collected, there was only a one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollar difference year-over-year in second quarter taxable sales. Now, our gross sales were up a little more than that, about three percent, but, um, I just thought it was very interesting that even though it seemed like we were busy, our taxable sales were actually flat. It'll be very interesting to me to see how third quarter went because, gosh, we were busy. We were really busy in town. So, as we continue to navigate these times, we are lending our voice to the Alaska travel industry, encouraging the State of Alaska to invest in programs to help prepare Alaskans for jobs and draw in new residents to help expand our labor pool, and also looking at things like childcare, which have had a major effect on people being able to return to work. So, let's, uh, now with all that said, we'll get into the meter, the report and kind of what we've been doing. And as far as our marketing, um, as I said, we, we saw a strong rebound of visitors to the Saldana Visitor Center this year. Our May and June numbers actually surpassed two thousand and nineteen, uh, with seven thousand six hundred and sixty-six visitors served, and I did almost want to change that number, but that's the actual number that we served in second quarter. Um, and, and that was up from two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, and both of those were record visitor years. So, um, our July numbers were considerably up from last year, uh, not two thousand and nineteen, but our August has been phenomenal. So, when I'm, when I give you our third quarter, it wouldn't surprise me if the visitor center numbers have completely rebounded and even surpassed those, those record years. Um, a lot of that is due to, we, we saw a phenomenal amount of buses coming through this year, which, um, was really pretty exciting for us. The buses had stopped coming for a while, um, so it was really nice to be able to take care of those people, uh, many times throughout the summer. I've got a breakdown here of our visitor guide distribution throughout the state for the year. We are on track to completely liquidate our supply by about November. Um, I've referenced our year-to-date relocation packets that were mailed out right at thirty-one. That is down from last year, uh, but only, only slightly. We are in the process right now of selling the twenty-twenty-three guide. Um, our, our revamp of the guide was very well received, and we've actually already completely sold out the advertising for the twenty-twenty-three guide, and now we're trying to, um, juggle things and see if we need to add eight more pages to accommodate all the advertisers that want to come in because they have to go by, up in eight-page increments. So, uh, we're kind of trying to find that sweet spot right now to see if we need to do that. Our membership is up to five hundred and thirty-eight, so, Councilmember Carey, we finally beat Homer. Yeah. So, um, yeah, things are, things are going very well on that front. We had a lot of fun with our Stay and Play promotion. This was our Instagram, uh, promotion that we worked with an influencer on. So, uh, we, we were advertising through our influencer that if somebody booked a stay in Saldana and provided us their receipts to prove that they had booked it through this program, that we would give them a, a really groovy Saldana buff, Saldana salmon buff. And, uh, through the end of June, we had thirty-seven people who submitted all the receipts to, to receive that buff, and those receipts totaled fifty-six thousand dollars. So, we, we thought that was kind of a fun thing to do, and of course, next quarter, I'll, I'll let you know how the, how the entire program, um, plays out through the end. Let's see. Uh, so, that said, our Instagram is still growing. Um, we were up seven, seven percent this quarter. Now, that said, our Facebook numbers took a big hit. Um, I kind of freaked out when I saw this huge drop in our visitor, in our numbers for Visit Saldana. So, they were down minus six percent. I've never seen anything like that happen. And, uh, so then I turned and looked at our chamber page, and it took an even bigger hit. It was down sixteen percent. So, uh, some research, uh, revealed the cause, which was a Facebook sweep of compromised and inactive accounts. So, they went through and they, they took all those people out, and that's what, what happened with those big drops in numbers. So, those weren't real customers. They weren't real people that we lost. It was nobody clicking a button saying, "We don't want to see your stuff anymore." But it still kind of hurts my heart because we were up over thirteen thousand, so we're gonna, we're gonna start climbing that hill again. Um, but, you know, I did, in this report, I wanted to show you, like, we do still have some great interaction. The Les Anderson Day post that we, that we made, um, hit over sixty-eight thousand people, and we had almost seven thousand interactions with that post. So, we're still going strong. Uh, let's see here. Okay, so, again, with the bad news, I moved on to our website numbers and noticed that our website, uh, was down quite a bit as well. Uh, but then, when I really started digging into things, I realized, so, we were down about seventeen percent second quarter for our users. New Year's users were down eighteen percent. Page views were down about twelve percent. And that's when I realized, you know, I have been preaching to the choir, or preaching, actually, not to the choir, I am the choir, uh, about the fact that marketing works, right? Marketing works. And last year, the City of Saldana made a substantial investment in marketing Saldana to help our businesses overcome the impacts of the COVID pandemic. So, at the, at the time, at the end of second quarter, we had about a hundred thousand dollars already invested in the marketplace that was advertising our website and, and all the other great things that, that we were doing. Um, I think that that was very forward-thinking of the city, and I do want you to know that those investments will continue to have impacts through things like the redesign of our guide, the redesign of so much content that we had online, also the photography that we continue to invest in. This is the third year that we've invested with Martin Media, um, in partnership with the City of Saldana. We have an incredible photography bank now to draw from. So, even though our numbers here are down a little bit, it, it does make sense because we had such a large investment in the marketplace last year. Um, looking at the events that we had over the, the past quarter and a little bit into third quarter, I, I have to move into that a little bit to tell you about some exciting things that we have going on. Um, the Levitt Am Saldana Series, of course, kicked off June first. We had a free color run to kick everything off, which is the picture that you see on the cover of the report. Um, just so much fun, and, and the series has been embraced so well this year by just thousands of people. Really, we're averaging sixteen hundred people in the park every Wednesday evening. Our, um, biggest show was at twenty-five hundred people, and our least well-attended was a hundred and seventy-five people, and that one was when there was a little mini monsoon going on in the park. Uh, but, um, still had a lot of fun that night. Um, I do have some very good news for the community. We're thrilled to announce that the Levitt Foundation has awarded us a three-year, ninety-thousand-dollar grant moving forward for Music in the Park. Yay! Um, so, having the support in place really enables us to continue to cultivate this series. It gives us, um, a lot of intention as we're moving forward. We will be able to work more closely with those bands further out. Um, having that financially secure base from which to operate means that we can continue to afford top-level talent and also be very strategic and in being inclusive and diverse so that all people are feeling welcomed and recognized in our park. Uh, we're just very excited, and I can't thank the City of Saldana Administration and council enough for all of the support that you've offered, especially Parks and Recreation. They're phenomenal. Um, permission to take one more minute?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Uh, let's see, Progress Days went well. Um, we're still trying to hit that sweet spot where we're not doing the same thing that we do on Wednesdays, so we're looking at possibly bringing in, like, some carnival rides and things next year to really separate it from what, what we're doing in the middle of the week. Um, we did have the Saldana Rocks logo, and we have turned that into Saldana Rocks Progress Days. We turned that into a Saldana Rocks logos with Kenai River on the bottom. Um, it looks like, you know, kind of the vintage eighties style, and we're going to have a clothing line with this on it, and I will be bringing it to council to show you all, um, as soon as we get them done, and they'll be open to the public to purchase. Christmas is coming up. They'll be great, great presents. Uh, finally, looking ahead, we're hosting political forums through, now through the election. Um, we have a council, Saldana City Council Candidate Forum scheduled on September twenty-eighth. We will have, um, invitations going out for that next week, and pie auction is scheduled, scheduled for October twenty-second. We're having a Saldana sock hop. Uh, so, that is the conclusion of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, thank you, and thank you, Shannon, for coming and making the presentation. Um, I'm amazed at the work that is done by the Saldana Chamber staff. You guys are phenomenal. With respect to the visitors who come to the Visitor Center, are those Alaskan? Are they mostly continental U.S., international? Can you kind of give us an idea where they're from?
It feels like an, uh, well, the visitors that we get in the Visitor Center, um, especially that go into and engage with our, uh, staff, are almost all national and international. Uh, what we see just walking through the door are, um, usually Alaskans that are utilizing the center for the facilities, like the restrooms. Um, I don't have a breakdown of percentage-wise. I'd say that we're probably right at fifty-fifty, fifty percent Alaskans coming to Saldana, fifty percent national and international visitors. That's a, that is an estimate.
And so, for, um, Concert in the Park, aside from the hundred and seventy-five locals that were there for the monsoon, um, are you seeing, uh, cross-section from around the state attending?
So, the best way that I can gauge that is conversations that I've had with the people that check IDs at the Beer Garden, and they're constantly blown away by how many, um, visitors they're seeing engage in that, um, in the park, um, many, many times. They're constantly seeing out-of-state IDs coming through, so, and many times, these people are blown away and saying they just can't believe that there's something of this caliber in this little tiny town. It's very heartwarming for us.
Mr. Carey?
Shannon, did I hear you mention a candidate forum on September twenty-eighth?
You did.
What time?
It's going to be a chamber luncheon, and it will be at noon.
Chamber, good, thank you.
At the Saldana Sports Center. Our first, our first luncheon back in the sports center since the renovations will have been complete.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much. I do apologize that I won't be able to stay much longer. I have to get back to the park. Thank you.
Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone? And please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is, uh, Tom Barup. My address is Peel Box Two Seven Six Three, Saldana. I'm a former Saldana City Mayor and Police Officer. I've lived in this community for many years. I've been into the Saldana Creek Park many times with visiting friends from out of state, out of country, and my family. My son previously served on the Saldana Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the City Parks and Recreation Board, and was involved for several years. One of my daughters also served on the Saldana Parks and Recreation Board. I am not a person that hates people, as some have suggested. I am a father, a grandfather, and concerned citizen, that's all. Some have also suggested that I hate people from the pride or homosexual community, but that is also not true. I care about people sincerely. I don't care where their, what their background is. My concern is what's going on, or has been going on, in the Saldana City Park. I am a man of conviction as a Christian, and am required by God to stand firm in my beliefs. My family consists of my wife for forty-six years, and I, along with our nine children, two of whom have passed, and thirty-eight grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I have heard that the man that performed the drag queen event had apologized to the community for his actions, but that also is not true. He apologized to the local pride group for the discontent and abuse that they had to have, they have had to endure from people like me. I have welcomed people. I spoke to them outside of here. I went up to them, introduced myself, and they were a little abusive toward me, not me to them. I am not commenting on the pride group or their beliefs, even if I don't personally agree with their lifestyle, but about the actions of a drag queen in Saldana Creek Park, which is a family-friendly park that families and children visit along with visitors from around the world. I personally don't want to see that type of a family park presentation for anyone that happens to be visiting the park during that time, no matter what type of advertisement has been done. This type of activity, sexualizingization of children should be held somewhere behind closed doors and restricted by age. This is not about hate, but about a community concern of a serious nature. My wife and I, along with others, have suggested that a committee be formed to address areas of the parks. Can I have just a thirty seconds? And the Recreation Board to visit the current policies of the city. We're sincerely desirous to sit down with anybody to discuss what the pros and cons might be. Our question is, has a committee been formed? And if not, one will be organized as well as who will be on that committee? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I'm going to just interrupt this public comments for a second and ask the city manager to, um, make a, um, presentation on what is going on, uh, along those lines. Ms. Queen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, one of the items that was added to the packet yesterday, so it's available online, uh, was my city manager report, and I included a summary of what the process will look like moving forward to address the issues that were raised by the public and also the council members who wanted to see a review of our policy and, and our code related to the park use. So, I, that's available online later if you want to grab it, but I'd be happy to speak to it now and highlight what I see as those steps moving forward. So, I met, uh, last Monday with Andrew Carmichael. He's our Parks Director, and Joel Todd, he's our Deputy Director, and we outlined essentially the framework of all the pieces of work that we thought would need to be done in order to thoroughly take a look at this issue. And that includes the application forms we use, the use agreement, the actual rental agreement people sign, the policy we referred to when we were here in July that the council has adopted, as well as the sections of code that inform each of those things. And it, it's normal in updating codes, especially something of this gravity, that that's going to take some time. I think in July, I mentioned probably a several-month process that we would kick off in the fall. That's still my plan. So, through the staff work to do the research, uh, look at other agencies, see how they handle public events at public spaces, work with the attorney so that he can identify the issues that are of legal concern or risk concern to him, we would do all that work, uh, starting soon in the fall, and then bring back a set of information and recommendations and drafts, and maybe even just posing questions to the Parks and Rec Board. So, a committee has not been formed, a separate standalone committee has not, because we already have a Parks and Rec Board that is tasked with advising the council with all things related to parks, whether it's facilities, whether it's policies. They meet twice a month, and so we don't have any agenda items yet, but when we do that work, when we are able to gather the, the information that I think will be needed for them to consider, then that's where you'll first see something that's advertised, where the public will then have an opportunity to come, participate, give public comments to, when there, there will be an actual kind of document to speak to with, with particular questions that need to be kind of thought through or, uh, additional opportunities for feedback. That might be one meeting, that might be two months of meetings, right? So, at the Parks Board, they'll have the ability then to say, "Here's the information we need. Here's some things that we need more research on. Here's some ways we want more public involvement." So, I don't know what that process will look like because it'll depend in part on, on how that Parks Board wants to proceed, but it'll be, um, ample opportunities for public comment and engagement at that point. Um, they're an advisory board to this council, so anything that comes from the Parks Board will then come back to the city council, and it'll come back as a recommendation with that body of work, uh, all the comments, all the input that came from staff, as well as the board, as well as the public. So, the timeframe for that, um, the work hasn't actively started other than this, this meeting we had last week to kind of outline this plan, um, but I wanted to be able to share for you that we have identified a process moving forward. We heard from folks who wanted this work to start. We've been discussing with council members in terms of how to prioritize this work, in terms of urgency and, and how to accomplish, uh, the scope of that project, and that's kind of our current plan where we're at right now. So, um, I'd be happy to wrap that up, Mr. Mayor, but thanks for allowing me to speak to that and, and give some additional information.
Mr. Carey?
To the, um, city manager, um, would you envision that in the process...
but thanks for allowing me to speak to that and, and give some additional information.
Mr. Carey?
To the city manager, would you envision that in the process, there'll be any mechanism, and I'll use the term task force, but again, that may be the wrong term, but there'll be any mechanism in which members of the community might be part of a task force to come up with suggestions for what should move forward?
Through the mayor to, to Councilmember Carey, I wouldn't envision that as part of this process, because we already have the Parks and Rec Board, which is made up of non-staff, as public citizens who have taken that, that step to advise. If at some point, the, the council or the Parks Board felt that there was value in that type of effort, we could consider it. It's not something that I can think of that we've done with an issue such as this, such as a code rewrite or a policy rewrite. Typically, those start with research and professional opinions of the staff, and then they work through one of the existing boards, whether it's the Planning Commission, or the Parks Board, or the Library Board. That would be unusual in my experience in terms of writing law, writing code.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to the-
Mayor Whitney.
Oh, Vice Mayor Parker.
If, if I might add, like our city council meetings, the Park and Rec Advisory Board meetings are public meetings, and there's the opportunity to engage and offer comment and provide recommendations through the process. So, there'll be the process there through the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and then whenever it comes to council, another opportunity there. So, lots of opportunity for good, good exchange of, of information and ideas.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to public comments and presentations, but I'm going to ask for the first one on Zoom to do that with a hand raised, and that will be Tim. Tim, are you there? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Tim Dillon, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District Executive Director. In your packet, the lay-down packet today, there's a document about strengthening the Kenai Peninsula's broadband service and infrastructure. As most of you probably know, the state of Alaska is going to receive approximately $2.1 billion for broadband connectivity and infrastructure. Knowing that that was coming to the state back in March, we formed a Kenai Peninsula Broadband Task Force. There are thirteen members of it, representing everything from the borough, the school district, the college, college, industry, our tribal folks, medical, the, the full gamut. And we've talked to a lot of people about who's on this, and we really believe that it's got a good cross-section of all the different organizations and, and people that should be represented. Here around two weeks ago, we were working with the Commissioner of the FCC, and one of the things that they're doing is they're going to take that $2.1 billion, and it's going to be divvied up based on lack of connectivity or low connectivity. As we were reviewing some of the mapping that was out there, the FCC Commissioner has come out and agreed that the mapping, the fabric mapping that's been done by the federal government for the state of Alaska is very, very wrong. There are seventy-some communities not even on the map, and there are a lot of places on the Kenai Peninsula that were not recorded. So, what our staff has done with the guidance of the task force is you'll notice on that two-page document, there's a QR code. What you need to do is just go on that QR code with your iPad or your phone or whatever. And what it'll do is it'll bring you to an app, and you choose which of the two FCC apps you need, whether it's an Apple product or a non-Apple product. You download the app, and then all you do is run the test. The test results are recorded automatically. There's, there's nothing else that you need to do. We're telling people that besides using the QR code, when you do it on your computer, there's the computer, the website is listed there. To go ahead and run the test from as many different places as you can, whether it be at your office, whether it be at home. And the other thing is, when you're at home, have the whole family do it at the same time. And you'll be amazed to see what happens with those numbers. It's our responsibility to make the federal government understand what our numbers look like. Our goal is for improved broadband across the Kenai Peninsula at reasonable costs. So, I ask that when you have the chance between now and September first, to go ahead and go online and test your speeds. Be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Move on to the, anyone else here in chambers? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Isaac Soldatna. I've come to you guys before about this. It's not so much about the Parks and Rec. That's a great start, but this is about public in general. I've spoken about this before, calling the law enforcement officers, asking if I could put a sock over my junk, cover my anus. Wife wears pasties and a thong. We're going to go chill in the children's park, and our officer's hands are tied, because we don't have anything for that. So, I'm going to start right here. You said in an email, can we look at the contract clause sexual explicit or what might be considered X-rated performances not be permitted in an open venue like that? That is in your email. So, you labeled the performance as explicit, possibly X-rated. You even asked what could be done, but never took any further action. Again, you said, I have served on this council as mayor for nine-plus years, and an incident like this has generated the most emails and phone calls of any single event other than the proposed mask mandate and annexation. It generates this attention, and, and you guys aren't addressing it. No one's addressing it, bringing it up, and silencing the public. Again, it was said in an email by you. If this performance had taken place in a venue where only those attending would be viewed, would be viewing it, this discussion and controversy would not be happening. You are absolutely correct. Then you say again in another email, because this performance took place in an open venue in the park where many people were subjected viewing, even a small portion of it, I have to agree, it was inappropriate for it to have taken place there. So, you believe it's inappropriate, you work for the people, yet you do nothing. It's time for us to do our job. I have something for each of you, but I'm going to come over to Justin Rutherford as well. So, you spoke to my wife and I for almost a month about this issue, during which time, and through two city meetings, you've done nothing. You never took a public stance, and nothing was ever done. You said you heard the people, and it was fifty-fifty. No, it was not. You heard the LGBT community say they want their rights. They got them. What you missed is us asking for verbiage covering public obscenities, which has nothing to do with any group. Even the LGBT community thinks it's an attack on them, and it's not. This is about public indecency. You'd never checked any of the emails. If you checked the emails, you said it was fifty-fifty. That would be about fifty to one. I have all the emails, and I can back that up. I've recorded a number of our conversations where you've told us it's not on the agenda we show up. It is on the agenda. You did nothing there. You told my wife. You said that you were waiting for lawyer's guidelines, did nothing. You've spoken a lot about what you're going to do, but you haven't done anything. Now, I see that the producers of this event and others are supporting your other campaign, and now it's all making sense to me. You strung us along, and I don't appreciate that. I do feel that you misdirected us and lied to us, and I don't appreciate that. You said that it would take a year to put an ordinance in, when that is also not true.
Thank you. Who's next? Sir? Please state your name and record, uh, name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Josh Silzo. I live in Salamatsov neighborhood. Father of six kids in Soldatna, owner of a business. I want to talk about the need to protect our children and families from sexually charged contact, content in public spaces. I want to begin by sharing a few professionally-vetted facts for the benefit of the council, as well as the public present, to illustrate why I think this is a matter of public concern, based on the premise that the exposure of children to sexually explicit material, whether it's lewd dance performances or internet porn, is part of the grooming process that provides pedophiles with a field of vulnerable victims. Our community has enough problems with the sexual exploitation of children without inviting more. I will include a couple of citations so you don't think I'm just making this stuff up. First of all, from Focus, the Journal of Lifelong Learning and Psychology. This is a peer-reviewed professional psychological journal. Pedophiles may engage in a wide range of sexual acts with children. Generally, pedophiles do not use force to have children engage in these activities, but instead rely on various forms of psychic manipulation and desensitization. For example, progression from innocuous touching to inappropriate touching or showing sexually explicit material to children. It also notes that fifty to seventy percent of pedophiles display other paraphilia, to include transvestitism, which for those of us that aren't initiated, means dressing up like a drag queen. Quoting from an article called Child Molesters: A Behavioral Analysis for Law Enforcement Officers Investigating Cases of Child Sexual Exploitation from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs. This is a publication of the Department of Justice designed to guide law enforcement officers in protecting their communities from the sexual exploitation of children. Child molesters show sexually explicit material to children. Any adult who shows sexually explicit material to children of any age should be viewed with suspicion as a child molester. This is generally part of the seduction process in order to lower inhibitions. I understand that coming up with the right language to protect our public spaces may take some time. But I'd like to see the council take at least a token action tonight to send a message I hope we all can agree on, and maybe allay the fears and concerns of some parents present in this audience today. I'll turn to you, Mr. Rutherford. I'd like to ask you to put forward a resolution to this council condemning pedophilia, pedophiles, and pedophilic behavior to include the deliberate exposure of children to sexually explicit material in our community. And if you refuse, I'll open my invitation to any member of this council who agrees that this is harmful for children and families here in Soldatna. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sir?
My name is Zeke Johnston. I live at 34218 Poppy Wood on K Beach. I'm a small business owner. I've got four kids. This is the third time you guys have seen me here. And there were some comments about us looking like rough-looking dudes in the back. We're actually pretty soft most of the time. But you have a situation on your hands, and I'm not implying anything violent. What I am implying is that you've got a whole bunch of concerned fathers and husbands and business owners and people in this community that you've not heard from before until now. And what I heard from the city manager, sounds like it's just not important enough. You're pushing it off even further. Justin, I have nothing against you. I've been to your pharmacy when I've had surgeries and stuff. I told you I was going to vote for you, and I didn't, because you won't stand up. Part of being a man and a leader is being willing to stand openly on what you believe. So, in leadership, if you aren't sure where you stand, that's fine. If you oppose me, that's fine too. But I would really like to hear some clear stances on people that are asking for my vote. So, I'm hoping that as we continue to show up at these, we're going to keep showing up, even if you guys push it back to the fall and doing something about this. But we're going to keep showing up until then. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Schumef from Soldatna. I, too, am a business owner in town, and I also feel the same as the rest of these guys you're hearing. Having that sort of sexual explicit stuff in our community is unacceptable. We cannot stand for that. We have to stand up against it. I'm not telling them what they have to do or can't do in their home. What they choose to do at home is up to them. What I choose to do, I teach my children about God. I'm a Christian. I lead them that way at home. Now, I know we can't go into the schools. We can't do that. Well, I feel the same way. If I can't take my faith, then they need to leave theirs at home too. Having them bring it, I'm extremely upset. My heart just beating, and I don't think it's because I'm sitting in front of you. It's because of the situation we're in. The situation that we can have people explicitly dressed, running around the parks, running around town, with nothing to be done, and people not caring to do something about it. We have to care more. We have to protect our children. Right now, we're in a whole world, the entire country is a mess, in my opinion. We have federal government and everyone else pushing that we have to bow down to people's agenda that we don't agree with. What they do at their home, that's up to them. But for them to push that on us and tell us we're bigots, and we're wrong, and we're racist, or we're anything else because we have a belief that we want to stand for, that we want to protect our children, that is garbage. We will stand up. And it's not because we're against them. I love them. I care for them. I want what's best for them. And I don't go preach to them and tell them what they can and can't do. But they need to treat us with the same respect. Okay?
Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
116 Wes Reedaw. What you're all doing is what I grew up in the gang doing. You guys are all part of it. When we grew up in the gang, we're desensitized to it. The homeboys, we see the homeboys selling drugs. We see the homeboys doing drive-bys. We're used to it. It becomes normal. That's the same thing you guys are doing, and it's wrong. You guys work for us. You seem to forget. You're going up to run for the house, and you say that you're a man of the people. You say that you're a man who listens. When your employees speak to you, you should look at them, sir. Because I am your boss, Justin. You know? But just so everyone can see, he won't, he won't show. And that's okay. At least the mayor will look at me. So, what I'm saying is, why is it being pushed off? You're not going to get rid of us. You're not going to get rid of us. This ain't a threat. You ain't going to get rid of us. We're going to be here every meeting. We're going to make sure you guys go home late, because we're going to be here. And all of you, all of your days are numbered. All of you are numbered. Because you guys are going with, you said that you listened to the fifty-fifty. I read those emails. My wife did too. Anybody who's got them, and then they try to shut us down by making us pay $500? You know what I mean? That's abuse of the city. That's abuse. But you know what? You guys think you can do whatever you want? That's cool, have your fun. But you really, really upset the community. And one thing you guys got to remember is that there's a lot of people in jail who are not happy with what's going on. Those are the people that you should be careful of, because those people, they're in there for a reason. And they feel that they can't protect their kids out here, so they expect the community to do it. So, I'm saying. No, ma'am, I'm still talking. I still have my minute and four.
Mayor Whitney, it's a rule of this body not to take personal threats, not to make testimony personal. I'm trying to understand the context of saying there are a lot of people in jail that are not satisfied, and I'm taking issue with this because our city staff have been threatened? The lady that waters the flowers was threatened.
Do you, do you know anybody that's in jail?
And I just think that we need to bring the, the, we need to maintain decorum so that everybody can participate in this process.
I'm asking questions, ma'am. And I'm telling you, because I know people in the NA who are in jail, and I'm just letting you know what I've heard from them.
Enough.
I'm telling you, enough, sir. I'm telling you, enough, sir. I'm not being, am I being disrespectful, sir?
We're not going to be talking about...
You might have thought... Thank you. I'm running for city council, just to let you all know, and I ain't gonna back down. I got nothing to lose, and I'm holding accountability.
That's enough, Mr. Hugarty. Thank you very much. We'll see you later. We have listened to many, many comments from everyone, and we respect your comments. We're not here to debate. We're going to be having some work done on this issue. It's going to take some time. It's going to be presented to everyone. It's going to be done in a peaceful way. What Mr. Hugarty just went through is more of a threat to everyone, not just everyone who's sitting up here, but everyone who's sitting out there. That kind of behavior creates more problems than it solves. We've listened to you, your concerns. We're going to be doing something. It's going to be looked at. It's going to be done in such a way that it will stand, withstand any legal challenges. It does not do any good to sit here and listen to comments and telling us, threatening everyone in this community about this. There's no, no reason for anyone on this council to pass any ordinance that cannot withstand a legal challenge. If we pass something just because somebody says we don't want that in here and a week later it's challenged, what have we accomplished? When we have a court that will throw it out and it'll cost the taxpayers god knows how much money to defend something that is undefensible. So the work's being done. It's being done in a, in a, in a way that it's going step by step by step. You will all have the opportunity, once that is, ordinance is put together and those policy guidelines are put together, to speak to those, not only in front of this body, but in front of the Parks and Rec. The Parks and Rec Committee can go ahead and make changes to that or make recommendations for changes. Then it will come back to this body. It does not do any good for anyone, from either side of the issue, to make threats or go personal attacks on any of us. And, 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 you know, we're better than that. You're better than that. So please, you know, state your views. We'll listen. All right, we'll go back to public comments. We'll have one more for public comment. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Joel Smith, 35390 Reeger. I grew up in this town, was born in Soldana at the hospital, and grew up playing in the local parks, and this is never something I would ever expected that I would see as a kid, playing on the swing set at Farnsworth Park, going down by the river at, there by the river park. I have two little three-year-old girls, and I haven't taken them to the park recently. You know, I'd like to, and I'm not necessarily concerned that that's what we're gonna see there today, but it happened, and I would like that to not be an issue. I want my kids to grow up, not with, in the back of their head going, what the heck is that? In my, in my kids' park. I love my kids. I'd do anything for them, and I just, I don't see what place this has in our parks. These are our children. These are areas that are supposed to be safe for them to where they're, they're able to play without being, without their parents being concerned that they're gonna see something they shouldn't. You know, I just plead with you guys that you would think about that. That's, these are places that are supposed to be safe for our kids, that they're not gonna see something that's gonna twist their mind or scare them or, you know, just things that aren't appropriate for them. I don't want my little girls seeing this kind of stuff in our town. I love our town. This is, this is a great place. It's a great place to raise kids. I would like it to stay that way, and you guys are a big part of that, and I would like you to really think about that. It's, it's, there's angry people. There's a lot of people getting twisted up pretty hard about this. My little girls aren't angry. They just want to go about life without seeing stuff that they don't need to see. So, thank you. Let's get, let's get after this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that'll be the end of the public comments. We've had twenty minutes in aggregate. I appreciate everyone that sat through this and listened, and we'll now move on to the next agenda item, and that will be Agenda...
People don't take it threat, or those of us standing up against this, we're the ones that will be called bigots. We're the ones that the people will come against, but we're still standing.
I don't know where that was coming from.
See you later.
We'll go back to the agenda. Ed and Jayden?
Are you guys taking any other public comments on any other topics? Because I was here for something else.
It'll be later.
Okay.
Back to Agenda Item Number Six, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers wishing to speak? Oh, no, I don't see anybody from the Assembly or the Legislature here. Okay, and there's no hands raised for that either. So moving on to the next item is Item Seven, Public Hearings. Ordinance 2022-023 authorizing the purchase of Track B-2C Mullen-Homestead subdivision Soldana Creek Park addition and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in the general fund introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This property is for the purpose of connecting East Readout to Homestead Lane so that there's a different way to come off of East Readout and not have to make that hard left. So for the last two years, our staff's been engaged with trying to have informal discussions and then more formal negotiations with the property owners that have property there in the vicinity of the Y with the goal of acquiring land that we can then dedicate as right-of-way so that road extension can be made, and people would be able to come off of East Readout and actually enter the Sterling Highway at a signalized intersection there at the Y. This parcel is owned by a corporation that is made up of the original Homestead family, the Mullen family, and if you're looking at the Y with the bookstore, it's, it's the piece parcel just to the left. It's about three and a half acres. It backs up to Soldana Creek, and it includes a bit of a flag lot that gets us most of the way to East Readout in terms of using that as a potential access point. Of the three and a half acres, we roughly estimate we would need only about an acre for the road right-of-way, and so that remainder, if we move forward with this purchase, the council would be able to give us direction. It could be put back up for sale so that it could then continue to develop commercially as that area's seen a lot of growth and development right now, or if the council wanted to retain it for some public purpose, we could consider that also. But I think it presents an opportunity to make that important safety connection from our street network standpoint and at a reasonable cost if the city did want to then try and recoup some of those funds through the sale of the remainder piece. The ordinance authorizes the purchase. I have entered into a purchase agreement with the corporation, though it's not binding. Ultimately, it requires the council's approval, so that's what this ordinance approval would, would take care of tonight. And it appropriates the funds for the purchase. The seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand is inclusive of the purchase price as well as closing costs. We did secure an appraisal, and that was, that information was presented to the council as required by our code, and we feel that this is a fair price for the land, given the comps in the area and the lack of other commercial land downtown. Of the seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, we're proposing that a portion of that be actually funds that we received when the city did our municipal land sale several years ago. So we sold, we have about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue from when the city sold surplus city lands, and we think that this is a good match for the use of those funds. So those with the remainder coming from the unencumbered general fund. I've reached out to a council member and asked for a potential amendment just to increase this ordinance by seventy-five hundred dollars. The purpose of that would be to accomplish the right-of-way replating, the survey work associated with replating that parcel so the right-of-way could be dedicated. We did receive a quote. That's about a six to eighth month process, depending on how busy the surveyors are, and then getting it all the way through the approval process. But if the council is interested in moving forward and if you were interested in having us move quickly in dedicating that right-of-way so that we'd be then able to decide what to do with our remainder parcel, an amendment to increase that by seven thousand five hundred would be appropriate. That'd be sufficient to get that work started immediately. I apologize that the map wasn't included in the packet. That was an oversight on our end, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. One last note, there's a small segment needed to get from the end of this panhandle to East Readout. We have successfully negotiated an offer with that landowner, so that is, that is under contract, and that'll be an ordinance that the council consider at your next meeting. But John Zorneski, our planning director, has been working on this, and we do have essentially all the negotiations in place to be able to make this road connection if the council chooses to move forward. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your phone. Is there anyone here in the chamber who would list, wishing to speak on Ordinance 2022-023? Please state your name for the record and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yep. My name is Penny Vodla, and I live at 399 West River View Avenue, Soldana, Alaska, and I'm not representing the city right now, and I'm not representing the school district, and I'd like to welcome you as our new fleet chief, Officer Meeks. I'm here tonight to say kudos to you. Thank you for looking at that land and for seeing that it would be a beneficial thing for the community and for us as people who have lived here, some people, for many, many years. I've been up here for forty-five and I think twenty-two in this city. So I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to do this. I did have a couple of questions. I really know that all the work that you put in is to better our community and to make us one community with lots of different visions, but one effort and one, one goal in, for the future, to be united, to have land that we can use. And I've done a lot of research. Why do people move to a community? They move to the community for the schools, for the social aspects, to recreate, I mean recreate, excuse me. That didn't come out right, guys. But I've had a long day, and to be part of something bigger than ourselves so that we can give back. I believe in being inclusive and not exclusive. I would love it, and this is a personal thing because I love trees and land, if you have the opportunity to save that property instead of selling it where we might have more box stores. I know box stores bring money. I know that they support us. I know that we're, that they're needed, but I see the need for land where you can connect some of that property so that we would have more open spaces. We're only seven and a half acres in this whole city, and so every time we, we sell land, and I know there's a need to have it so you have income coming in for the city, but if we don't need to, I think that would be an exceptional piece of property to own for the city so that we could have more areas where people could walk, we could connect one land section to another land section. You know, I've talked to you about this, Ms. Hutchings, or AKA Linda, but I, I think it would really be beneficial for us to do that. So I applaud each and every one with one of you, and thank you. I don't think I had anything else. Oh, the, the revenue that's reserved, that's the revenue that you mentioned earlier. That was the fifth, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh, whereas, that's the, what you referred to earlier. Is that correct? Okay, because I had that question, and I like the fact that you're trying to get the extra land, so I didn't, that's all I wanted to say. Consider maybe not selling it so that we have more space. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions from the council? Any sale of that property would be somewhat down the line. It'd be a while down.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Any consideration of it. Anyone else that would like to speak on Ordinance 2022-023? All right, I see one hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Ron Henry. Go ahead, Mr. Henry. You're on to speak on that ordinance. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, this is Jean Anne Henry, his wife, and I'm using his computer. I live in Sterling, own a lot of property in Soldana. I guess my question is, how large is that parcel of ground on the river, and how much riverfrontage is there?
How large is it? Is that what you said?
Yes.
What's the size? Like three point nine, something?
This is Stephanie through the mayor. So this parcel, it's just under three and a half acres, and it, it backs up to Soldana Creek, so it's not along the river. It's there at the Y, adjacent to the creek.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Okay. Thank you very much. Move on. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? And I see no other hands raised, so we'll close the public comment and we'll bring it back to the ordinance or bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to amend as requested by the administration, Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of administration, I would move to amend Ordinance 2022-023 by adding a new eighth whereas to read, whereas an estimated cost of seven thousand five hundred dollars is needed to hire a surveyor to do the replating necessary to dedicate the right-of-way, and by amending Section Six, by increasing the amounts of both the appropriation of fund balance revenues and the non-department land acquisition appropriation by seven thousand five hundred dollars to reflect the new totals of eight hundred thousand five hundred dollars for each fund.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any discussion?
Question?
Mr. Ruffridge?
Good. You go first.
I just wanted to make sure that he had that dollar amount right in that motion, Mr. Chilton. If you added seven...
I have three-dollar amounts, so seventy-five hundred dollars in the first whereas, and then in the second, non-departmental land acquisition appropriation by seventy-five hundred dollars, and then the new totals of eight hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Question for the clerk. Would we also need to amend the title of the ordinance because the appropriation would then be for eight hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars?
Through the mayor, yes. Amendment to the title would also be appropriate.
I would propose an amendment to the amendment to change the title of the ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Track B-2C Mullen-Homestead subdivision Soldana Creek addition and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by eight thousand six hundred, eight hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars in the general fund.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Any discussion? Any objection to that amendment to change that heading? Seeing none, the motion to amend the amendment passes by unanimous consent. We're back to the first amendment, and any further discussion on that? Any objection? Vice Mayor Parker?
So question for the city manager. On the consent agenda tonight, we had the ordinance authorizing the survey plating and purchasing of a portion of Track A, which is to the northeast of this Track B-2C. Would this be something that you would do these two, survey plating and replating simultaneously?
Through the mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. We'll likely use the same firm. We've received quotes from the firm that has done a lot of previous survey work in that area, so they'd have a good starting point for the new replating. Because the Schmider, Schmider is the owner of the other parcel you referenced, she will be the person signing off on that plat. We'll probably still keep them as two separate plaits so that as they go through the process, the final owners can sign off and not be confused, but I think we'll, we would work to engage that process simultaneously so that both of them could move forward efficiently.
Thank you. Yes, I understand that they're two separate replats.
Okay. Going back to that amendment, is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing none, we'll consider the amendment passed by unanimous consent. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank the administration. This has been a long time coming. For those of us who have been here forever, this is a safety issue. It's just, this is gonna make that area so much safer, and there's no way you can put a dollar amount in terms of a life, but again, this is gonna, this can be a wonderful addition, and again, it gives us a lot of other options as well as we move forward, and I just, I hope everyone supports this fully.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll on the amended ordinance.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty... Ordinance 22, 2022-023 as amended and passed on a 6-0 vote. Moving on to the, further on to the agenda, under new business, the Resolution 2022-036, amending a job title from account clerk for payroll slash human resources, assistant to accountant, reclassifying the position from salary range 14 to a range 17, adding a regular part-time HR assistant and amending the FY '23 authorized staffing table. To reflect the change, reflect the changes introduced by the city manager may have a motion to adopt.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-036.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. One of our longtime employees took an opportunity for an exciting new position in a nearby community. And so she has left a vacancy within our finance department. And as typically happens within our small departments, when we have a vacancy, I get together with the department head and HR manager and we rethink through how most efficiently to distribute the work and the tasks and improve service at the same time if we can. HR duties have fallen under various finance people within our organization for a while. And currently, our HR manager is actually still the accountant/HR manager. So Jessica still has that in her job title despite doing 98% HR work. And if she had more capacity, she certainly would be doing more. My goal with this reorganization is to add capacity. It adds effectively a halftime, a .5 of a full-time position. And it also separates, further separates HR duties from the finance department. So the existing finance position would be reclassified to a higher range. It would be given higher levels of responsibility. And I think that would start building within our organization some legacy planning so that the number two person could now be this accountant who would be able to cross-train with Melanie on more complicated and sophisticated finance tasks like audit prep, like grant reporting. So the goal of the position is to build more depth within the finance department while at the same time really giving more resources to human resources. Jessica would remain the HR manager, but we would propose a new part-time position to be her assistant. That's, I think, is going to be really helpful. I mentioned in my manager's report, we've been thinking a lot about recruitment, how to be more effective in our strategies. We need to be thinking critically about retention as well as, everybody knows, hiring is challenging for us as well as the private sector that was mentioned earlier. And we just are at a point where Jessica's not able to take on those additional projects because, for example, this week she's doing payroll. So she is still the only other person in our organization that fills that role within the finance department. So I think this will be a benefit both finance department and HR in terms of the services we provide. The financial impact is $60,000. So it would require an amendment, which would be an annual cost. That is the impact of both of those changes. So both the reclassification of the accountant position as well as the creation of the new additional HR assistant. And I would thank the council for your consideration. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on their telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 2022-036? Seeing no one, I'll look at the Zoom and I see Mr., or excuse me, Ron Henry's name with a hand raised. So please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, this is Jean Anne Henry. Again, I just had another question. We were discussing the land, which you've already passed. But I'm assuming that there was some groundwork done beforehand and there was appraisals done on the value of the land by an appraiser?
Can you answer that?
Through the mayor, yes. The city, for the prior action item, the city did obtain a commercial appraisal from a lender. Typically, those documents are confidential until such time as the closing of the property. But yes, the council was made aware of a commercial appraiser that we obtained within the last two months.
So there was one appraisal done?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Go back to, is anyone here wishing to speak on that? On ord, excuse me, Resolution 2022-036. Seeing none, public comments are closed. Manager's back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Resolution 2022-036 passes on a 6-0 vote. Moving on along, we are now going to Action Memorandum 2022-020, Determining the Fiscal Year '23 Cycle 1 Mini Grant Awards. Report from the interim, boy, I can't talk now. Report from the interim city clerk.
For the FY '23 Cycle 1 Mini Grant Awards, nine applications were received. The clerk's office was able to confirm the eligibility of six applicants. Three applicants did not provide sufficient proof of either operating budget or nondiscrimination standards to verify if they met the eligibility requirements. At the work session prior to this meeting, the Soldatna City Council reviewed the applications and a scoring rubric has been provided for fair and consistent scoring. Using the scoring rubric, the mayor and council members may each award up to 20 points per group from each council or each of the members of the council or mayor for a maximum total possible of 140 points. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess we now pass these score sheets to you and pass those along. We'll take a short five-minute break while those are tallied. And I just wanted to reiterate the fact that I did not vote on three of those items on there. Had to deal with the wrestling and mainly because I have two grandchildren that wrestle for all the organizations involved and I think I best I stay out of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Carey?
Just, I think for the clerk in terms of understanding how that works, because if you don't get to vote, again, it would appear that's like a zero from you for that item. So I'm just asking, do you in some way prorate the others so that his abstention does not negatively affect the other items?
Through the mayor, we would take the average of these scores that were placed and use those as his score. For exactly that reason, so that they would not be negatively impacted.
Thank you.
We'll be on a short five-minute break. Break a little bit early because I missed something here. And on the Action Memorandum 2022-020, Determining the Fiscal Year '23 Cycle 1 Mini Grants Awards, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on the action memorandum and the mini grants? And I don't see any hands raised under Zoom. So now we'll go back to the ranking process. And I'm going to read the ranked scores here. That almost doesn't sound right, but the scores by rank. And the highest ranking group is Peninsula Period Network with a score of 127. The second highest ranking group is with a score of 115 is Barely Threaded Quilting. The third highest ranking group, Soldatna Library Friends with a score of 110. The fourth highest ranking group is Kenai Peninsula Peace Grove Garden Trails with a score of 90. Fifth highest ranking with a score of 81 is Skyview Wrestling Boosters Club. The sixth highest ranking score with a score of 81 is Sohigh Wrestling Booster Club. The seventh highest ranking score group with a score of 72 is the Soldatna Whalers Wrestling. The eighth highest ranking group is with a score of 63, Peninsula Crime Stoppers. And the ninth highest ranking score group is with a score of 36 is North Coast Designs. There's too many grants available. The council, it's a council decision to either issue one, two, or none. So it's back, back to the city clerk.
I'm sorry, through the mayor, it's, the policy does not limit it to two grants. It limits it to $2,000.
Okay. So I guess you could split the group, split the awards up. So may I have a motion to award? And it will need to state the dollar amount being awarded to each of the highest ranking applicants. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I certainly appreciate everyone. And I would move that the city council award two $1,000 grants to the first and second ranked categories.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. And council comments. Vice Mayor Parker?
Question for the city clerk. The second rank did not meet the criteria that were provided in the mini grant application. So prior to the award of that, would they have to comply?
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, I was not able to verify. It's not that they did not, they did not provide proof that their operating budget was 100, less than $100,000. At the discretion of the council, yes, I believe they would need to provide proof of that in order to be eligible for the policy.
Could the award be made pending that information being provided?
Through the mayor, absolutely.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Parker?
The only reason I bring that up is because if we start to deviate from the criteria that we put in our grant application, in the future, somebody will come along and they will say, you did it for one organization. Why don't you do it for me? So I would like for the applicant who hasn't provided the sufficient proof to get that with the clerk before that is awarded. So we don't run into similar situations in the future.
Does that need to be a motion?
No, it's just stating the reason I bring it up. So we don't, you don't get caught in similar situation in the future. And should, should the applicant, the number two applicant not be able to provide that, then the award would then go to the number three applicant?
Ms. Hutchings?
I was wondering how long they had to get this grant paperwork in and how long we have had it and how long it has been since you asked them for the information.
They provided information, but it wasn't sufficient for our department to assess what they, that they were eligible. They were, the end of the cycle was August 15th and the packet deadline was two days later. So the turnaround was extremely short.
So the information they gave you was not verifiable? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So if it's not verifiable, I would consider it not a complete application? Just, I mean, they had the opportunity.
Have, have they been given an opportunity to update that information?
They were given the opportunity to provide the information, but due to the packet deadline, they, we did not request additional information at this point.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's clear, based off of our scoring, that we certainly feel like supporting sewing is a good opportunity here on the peninsula. So I think regardless of that outcome to the city clerk or acting city clerk, there's an opportunity here for a large number of sewing machines that have already been purchased to either be, help offset the cost of that for that program to learn to sew at Barely Threaded, which I think meets the mini grant policy if we can wrap up some of those other needed items and potentially also serve a role at the library for the program that's being started. And maybe we can have a little more bang for our buck, as we already mentioned before. But either way, I think there's an opportunity to fund some version of sewing machines being available for a community to learn to sew. That's what I would hope to see happen here.
Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I formerly served on the mini grant committee back when the process utilized that committee for the awards. And I can say that over the, over the couple of years that I was involved with that, we awarded a good handful of mini grant awards with requirements that they provide documentation after the award. So this isn't really a deviation from that process. A lot of small businesses and organizations aren't really familiar with the grant process. And I really wouldn't like to see us take away the ability to do something good in our community over somewhat something like the bureaucratic process. So I support the current motion as presented.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Through the mayor, if the current motion stands, it would be requested by the clerk's office that the stipulation that they meet the eligibility requirements be added to the motion.
Everyone comfortable with that? All right. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
I would recommend to the interim city clerk that in doing that, you provide them with a timeframe so that they, they know they need to get it to you by a specified time.
Anything else? We'll go ahead and vote on the motion. A roll call.
For the motion to award two $1,000 grants to the first and second highest scored groups, which is Peninsula Period Network and Barely Threaded Quilting, with the stipulation that Barely Threaded Quilting provide proof of eligibility. Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Okay, the action memorandum with the mini grants approved 6-0 for the top two rankings. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is mayor and council reports. Mayor's report. I had included in the packet a copy of the, kind of a history through news articles from the Clarion in regards to the farmer's market. And that was originally put together by the, well, by a group here that was led by Mr. Larson, which was Gloria Sweeney's first husband. And he passed away shortly after that in 1992. So it's just a little history there. I wanted to get it on the record so that we have a copy of it here on the files. And I also forwarded it on to the farmer's market group so they could have good information, good history. I also issued a proclamation. I'm not going to read it, but it's a quick rundown is, it's a proclamation declaring two days, August 29th and August 30th is Bruce A. Henley Days. Mr. Henley is the national president of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Velks, and he will be traveling here on the Kenai Peninsula in Kodiak starting that week. He'll be here the entire week. So the next item, first off, I guess the main thing is I'd like to apologize to everyone on the council and the staff for what happened earlier, letting that get a little bit out of control. I'm kind of used to hearing that kind of stuff from my background. So it doesn't, it doesn't have as much effect on me as it probably has on the rest of you. And I apologize for letting that get out of control. It was, it was uncalled for and we should never allow, or I should never allow any kind of a personal attack on anyone inside the council chambers, whether there's anybody sitting up here or somebody in the audience. So having said that, I'll move on to my next comments. I attended the AML conference in Sitcom. I attended the AML conference in Sitcom. I guess I must have, I guess Saldana must have brought good weather down, down there because it stopped raining when we got there and didn't start raining until we left. So it was quite a trip. A lot of what is in the city manager's report is the same thing I would be reporting, so I'll kind of keep it brief. One of the major, major discussions was workforce development and how we need to hire people and then get people to working and everything else, and how it's an effect on everyone, not only local government, defined employees, but along with local businesses trying to fill that void. Two points that were brought up that were actually three points that were very critical in the recruitment process, and some of that was housing, the lack of housing, the lack of affordable housing, the other one being childcare, something that, you know, someone my age, I don't think about that anymore. But that is something that is an issue that a lot of, lot of possible employees or employee, yeah, employees look at, is it worth them to go to work and then have to pay a totally high rate for childcare? So, and the third one that was discussed was employee benefits. And I've mentioned this before, it may be that we're going back to like it was somewhat during the pipeline days, is we're going to have to start looking at different options, not only the local government, but private employers, as to how we're going to put a benefit package together for future employees, whether it's a retirement or different versions of healthcare, different versions of some fringe benefits. I know some communities mentioned that they had been talking about providing housing for employees and/or affordable housing or making it available. So there's a lot of different things, and I think the administration is looking at all those different items and doing a good job on that. Some of the other things that were discussed, there was presentation, quite a few presentations made during part of it, a review of the legislation that passed, discussions on the future of the legislation, our legislature, legislature, because there's going to be a fairly substantial turnover this year, a lot of new faces. I think they're looking at 25% or more in, in both houses. So a lot of good things. The next one, oh, another one that was mentioned is there's going to be another infrastructure symposium in Anchorage, starting September 5th through the 9th, the entire week. There's going to be a lot of different information presented. The administration's going to be looking at what's, what's going to be presented, what days it's going to be presented, and how we can benefit, benefit by sending employees to participate in that. The other one is the AML will be meeting again for their annual meeting in Anchorage in December, December 5th, I believe it is, starting 5th through the 9th, thereabouts. I would urge everyone who has the time that probably to attend that to be some good information. So I'm going to end my report at that point, and the next item is council reports on boards and commissions, and we have none. Next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Apologize for the late addition of my memo, but I covered part of it already, and Mayor Whitney covered as well, the debrief of our trip to Sitcom. It was a great trip. I also tacked onto that two personal days in Juneau. I had not been to Juneau, and it was also sunny and beautiful when we were in Juneau. I was shocked by the cruise ship culture. There were six cruise ships on Tuesday when we were in town, and seeing that contrast to our tourism here locally was kind of exciting to me, the opportunity for what we're doing with local tourism. The only other thing I'll point out, we are doing the wide employee benefit review, and we're working with a woman who is very smart, has a lot of experience in the HR world, and she's consulting us. What I wanted is a menu of options that have been vetted initially in terms of cost feasibility so that we can come back to you and maybe prioritize and pick and choose a few items that we might want to consider implementing. And some of them might be low cost or no cost. For example, I think one of the most promising things we could do is provide more flexibility in terms of scheduling and hours and how people perform their work. So there might be things on that list that don't come with a fiscal impact, but that would be highly valued by employees. So that works underway. And then I recognize that I had not also let you know that we're contracting with a firm that specializes in healthcare consulting. So we are, had started that process, I know, at budget time, when we saw the premiums go up more than we expected, we promised that we would start taking a look at that. And we are working with a firm, Parker Smith &amp; Feek, who we have worked for, we worked with in the past. They've consulted in the past on healthcare issues, and they're taking a look at our current plan, advising if there's things that could be done within our choice structure right now. But ultimately, they'll be in a position to advise us if it turns out we're not quite hitting benchmarks, they'll be with us and available to assist in kind of a phase two of the project, which would be supporting our efforts to go back out and solicit quotes for healthcare for next year. So those efforts are underway, and as soon as we've got work product that we can share back with the council, we'll be sure to do that. And I think I'll let that conclude my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, moving on to public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom. Oh, go ahead, sir. Yep. Now, please step up here and state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Holly, just like a student from Missouri. I live in Saldana. I'm not going to give the address because it's a place where my in-laws live as well. So I am going to be talking about the thing that happened in Saldana in the park. I'm not going to come here and bash you or whatever. I think you've gotten that enough. I have talked to a few people and played basketball with Kyle and with Justin, you know, through family members and whatnot and have conversations and everything. I, I'm sorry that we have a community that's having this issue right now, and I understand their passion. I feel the same way dealing with our kids. I coached basketball, I could get in the economy for the girls' team. And if I was to have something like that, believe me, I would definitely put my life on the line for any one of those girls for anything, as well as I would do for you. And I think that's being who I am as a Christian. But that doesn't solve the issue. And I know that y'all are trying to do your due diligence and try to dot your i's across your t's, ordinances, or whatever it is that's going on behind the words that I don't know about. You know, you're doing your stuff. I know that takes time. And I apologize for that, even though I know I want it to happen quickly, because I don't want something to ever come back and bite me in the butt with something I'm trying to do out there in the park as well. And I understand that laws that are not precise and for a guy like me who has, you know, I have a degree and everything like that, but I don't talk like I do, you know, just a common man, it needs to be able to be read and understood from a common man. And that's one of the biggest things that I hope that you're doing with that. But I have a solution, and I don't know that you have to take it to Parks and Rec and have anyone vote on it, but it's just as simple as a disclosure form, that you have them have to check off if there's sexual explicit or whatnot, disclose even to people that are already having music out there. And having that, you can rate it, G, EG, EG-13, and there it are. Now you put it in the public's hands, and you have something out there that gets it done quickly and starts right now. And that way, it gives you a little buffer, and you have something to give them, saying if we are working on it, we want to make sure that when we come up with an ordinance or something like that, it's not going to over anyone's constitutional rights. And I think that's the biggest way that you have to come at it from that standpoint. And I'm sorry that we have people that are passing it. They get three minutes to be able to try to say everything they've been holding on to for months, and y'all have to talk about it a little bit more with each other and figure things out. And I get that, being a, I'm a business owner and we run it like a corporation, and it's tough. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, anyone like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Ruffridge. Mr. Carey?
I always have comments. Thank you very much. I saw tonight examples of a very, very good proactive response by our new chief. And I've been around here a while, and I've been to a lot of meetings, and I just want to say how very much I appreciate what I saw you do from the very beginning. Pretty much all of us know that in crisis situations, you try to stop stuff early rather than wait till it gets bad and then respond. What I saw you do, I just greatly appreciate, and I just want to say thank you very much. And third item, you know, we approved tonight, dealing with human relations and accounting. Again, we dealt with inequity, putting too much responsibility, maybe again, just different demands. But I'm also really aware that there's another one, and I don't have a, I don't have an exact response in terms of how to do it, but I just want to note it. In our clerk, interim clerk, assistant interim, assistant interim, interim, whatever, you know, we've got people doing the full nine, the full deal, and yet they're just sort of temporary, temporary until we get the real. I just want to say I greatly appreciate what I see in terms of the work that's being done, again, by the two city employees that are there. Quality of the people that you have that work for you, again, set the stage for, again, the quality of life you get to see and the type of government. And so what I see with, with our interim clerk and what I see with the assistant, I just greatly appreciate, and I know that they're being asked to do a whole lot more stuff than what they had planned to do, which is the nature of it, and I greatly appreciate it, and I just want to say I love Saldana. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and I thank everybody who came out tonight and testified. Once again, our, our chambers were full, and we had lots of lively and, and interesting testimony. And as somebody mentioned during their testimony, Saldana is a great place to live and to raise your family. And particularly, our, our city employees work very hard at making Saldana attractive, and I was sorry to hear that some of our employees who are working to keep our community beautiful are being harassed and threatened by folks in the community. So hopefully, people will bring their emotions under control and, and not be publicly threatening our, our city employees. As was outlined by the city manager, the process going forward, as we look at updating our 50-year-old code, as someone once told me, you know, in order to, to make an informed decision, I need to have the information. And what the city administration is doing is getting the information so that we can make an informed decision, and when people will be able to provide that input into, you know, what's, what's good, what's bad, so we can, we can balance that out. And as we move forward, both through the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and through the council as this process unfolds, I hopeful it is that this public process is peaceful and that people are engaging and being respectful of, of others. I want to say to our mini grant applicants, thanks to all who applied, and congratulations to, to those who received the mini grants, and hopefully we'll have as much interest in the future. I, I can't say I apologize. I am very happy that a trip that we had planned two and a half years ago, my husband and I are now going to be able to take. So we will support, or, and we're going to take and celebrate his retirement and celebrate a significant anniversary for us and come back with some great stories. So I will see you all the end of September.
Thank you. Mr. Chilton?
Uh, no comments tonight.
Mr. Nelson?
I had no comments either, thanks.
Ms. Hutchings?
The only comment I have is I think Justin needs a hug after tonight.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is executive session. There is none needed. Next item is pending legislation. The following pending legislation is Resolution 2022-027, forming a specialist assessment district for Whistle Hill Sewer Utility Improvements introduced by the city manager with a public hearing on September 14th, 2022. Next item, meeting announcements. September 1st, 2022, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting at 5:30 PM. September 7th, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, 5:30 PM. And September 14th, 2022, city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Having no other business before us, the meeting is adjourned.